Welcome everyone to the regular city council meeting today, April 28, 2025. I now call this meeting to order. Can I get a roll call?
District one, council member Casey.
Present.
District two, council member Vera.
Present.
District three, council member Otero.
Here.
District four, vice mayor Martinez, absent, Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please stand for the invocation by Pastor Gianosa from Big Valley Grace, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and all city employees. Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for the way you serve our community. Let me pray. Father, we thank you for giving us a place like this to live, a place where people are concerned, where things matter, where we care for one another, and we strive to do better at that every day. Thank you for the men and women that are gathered here today that serve our community so faithfully. They give their time, they give their talents and resources to serve the people of this community, and we're grateful for that. As they meet tonight, give them wisdom, discernment, understanding, help them to think in the future as well as today. Help them to be mindful of those that have less or are in great need, that need our help, need our support, and make choices that will benefit this community for years and years to come. So they're going to need wisdom, and we thank you that they're seeking it. And so, Lord, may you bless this time and bless this city and bless the people that are involved. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, council, we need to go to the front. We have a proclamation today for Cinco de Mayo. Then the Soscaray Promotoras, the Center of Human Services, will be accepting the proclamation. Welcome, everyone. Today's proclamation, proclaiming May 5, 2025, as Cinco de Mayo. Cinco de Mayo began with the proclamation from President Benito Juárez of Mexico as the date observed to commemorate the Mexican Army's victory over the French Empire at the Battle of Mi Puebla. On May 5, 1862, under the leadership of General Ignacio Sagarosa, and the battle, whereas this battle is significant in the Mexican soldiers were greatly outnumbered by the well-equipped elite French Army. It had not been defeated in almost 50 years. On June 7, 2005, the US Congress issued a concurrent resolution calling on the President of the United States to observe Cinco de Mayo with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Cinco de Mayo has evolved into a cultural celebration in many communities across the United States, meant to honor Mexican culture and heritage through parades, music, dance, and traditional foods. The City of Series wishes to celebrate Mexican culture and heritage and recognize the importance of Cinco de Mayo. Now therefore, be it resolved. I, Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Daniel A. Martinez, Councilmember James Casey, Rosalinda Elviera, and Serena Otero, do hereby proclaim May 5, 2025, as Cinco de Mayo. I encourage all residents to recognize and celebrate Mexican heritage on Cinco de Mayo mayor throughout the year. There will be a parade on Crow's Landing this Saturday. Hope to see everybody there, and congratulations, ladies.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor for us to receive this proclamation. We are promotoras of cities. We belong to Center for Human Services and Raíz Promotoras from Stanislaus County. We have served here for more than 15 years, and we are really honored to be here today and we recognize our celebration of Cinco de Mayo. Thank you.
Moving now to citizens' communications. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in the City Council meetings, a drop to rules allow no more than five minutes for expression on non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking any action on any matters which is not on the posted agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on agenda items subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the City Council must adhere to the rules of decorum, and the rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. And we will start with our representatives first.
Right. Good evening, City of Series. Justin Farkas, representing the Office of Assemblyman Juan Alaniz, coming to you with a wealth of information from our lovely capital and our assemblyman who represents us in Sacramento. The assemblyman has been hard at work focusing on a lot of the needs that our Central Valley residents have faced. You follow us on our social media platforms or saw in local media. We were graciously invited to join La Familia Central Valley in the ribbon cutting for their new mobile mental health care unit, which is going to be serving Westside residents here in Stanislas and in Merced Counties, which we both represent, the cities of Gustine, Newman, and Patterson, as well as the unincorporated areas sitting between, providing them very much needed mental health services for those rural communities that live in the healthcare desert that we have found ourselves in here in the Central Valley. In legislation, the assemblyman is going to be presenting a couple of bills here this week. The most exciting, if you ask our offices, has to do with RIPA reform. It stands for the Racial Identity and Profiling Act. That is a bill that was signed in 2019. We're just looking to make some changes to that and bring law enforcement more to the table when they bring out their studies and information, analysis of data that the Department of Justice and that board receives annually, as well as allow for dissenting opinion from our law enforcement officers who sit on that board, or well, officials, I should say, that sit on that board, allow them, should there be a disagreement on certain certain premises that get brought forth through these discussions, make sure both sides are heard through that process. Obviously, being here in the Central Valley, we also have the pleasure of having very close roots to Star Wars. If you guys know the assemblyman, he's very fond of the Star Wars series, and Mr. George Lucas, who is a home modestin at heart, whether he claims this or not. And we are proud to be the member that throws the annual May the 4th celebration in Sacramento each year. However, we will be out of session. May 4th is on a Sunday this year. And because on Monday is obviously Cinco de Mayo, we do not want to overshadow those festivities. So we're going to be celebrating May the 4th on May the 8th this year up in Sacramento, but still expect to have just as much fun as we do every year celebrating the the universe, I guess you can call it, of Star Wars. So really excited about that. Happy to answer any questions for you. And as always, thank you to the City of Series for hosting us here at your city council meetings. Sit out front and get a, take some questions here from our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now open the public period for anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment. This is now your opportunity.
I would like to correct something from the meeting two weeks ago. Rosa Linda had asked me if I would go against the $5,000 for the street fair. So I said, yeah, because I am against it. Well, Lisa Montero Moore gave her speech, and she said what the money was for. And it was for cleanup and for the police, since the city wasn't going to provide enough of that. But some way or another, Rosa Linda got it in her head that it was going to be to benefit the children and the sports. Well, it wasn't. In fact, the money came out of the recreation money. So just for the record, I want people to know that the money did come out of the recreation. It did not help the kids. It probably hurt them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Brandy Myers, City of Series, Chamber of Commerce, but also co-chair for Love Series. We're here today because we just had our Love Series and want to give a report. So between April 18 and April 26, we had two days this year of projects. April 18, Nathan and Sonia Sanchez did a classic car cruise up, which provided encouragement and good words to people who have had some tough times. From what I understood, I didn't make it. I got there 10 minutes too late to go on the cruising. But from what I understand, they had quite a few volunteers, lots of cars. I think even Shirley got invited to one of them. And it was a lot of fun from what I heard. So I'm looking forward to hopefully letting them do it again or asking them to do it again next year and continuing that project. We had about 175 volunteers between that project and all the projects on Saturday. Some of our projects included American flag replacement, which was led by Persephone Guild. They replaced about 12 to 13 flags, either replacements or new flags for homes in series. We also had cards for veterans, which was led by Councilmember Otero. About 40 cards, which will be given to the Blue Star Moms, to be given to military families, both veterans and current. We had our downtown cleanup, which was led by Amy Bedina from the Series Chamber of Commerce. The first responder vehicle car wash led by Donald Miller. That's always a favorite. The kids love it. We actually had one child who wanted to go on the fire tour because the fire station was also giving tours of the trucks in the fire station. He got torn because a vehicle pulled up at the time. He was supposed to go on a tour, and he had to choose between the two. And he was very frustrated because he wanted to do both. So it's a very big hit. They actually took him on a tour later, so. Then we had our multiple public safety. If you get an opportunity to drive by the police and fire stations, California Landscape donated some tambour. We put that in the front area just to try to spiff it up a little bit, make it a little bit nicer. We'd like to thank them for their donation. That project was led by our chief of police, Mr. Johnson here. And in the back, Lieutenant Hudson just raised his hand. So thank you to those two for taking on that project as well. Neighborhood Parks Cleanup was led by Nick Powell from Youth for Christ. We worked on Ochoa, Guillermo Ochoa Park, River Bluff Regional Park, and Smyrna Park. Smyrna, I heard, was the biggest one that needed to be cleaned up, so that one got taken care of. And we're always happy to go out and clean our neighborhood parks. Tony Cordell volunteered her time from Public Works to lead the projects for the senior yard work. We did have only a couple this year, but it still made a difference, and we hope to continue that one. And then our librarian, Rebecca Brown, held a childcare here at the community center for anybody who wanted to go out and do projects but had little ones. They didn't want to drag with them over there. It gave them an opportunity to have time for games and fun and reading, and she's always really good with the little kids. So I want to thank her for that. At our kickoff, we had, our LC mascot was there, leading with DJ Marty Peneta, got it going. Our Lions Club provided breakfast burritos, about 250 breakfast burritos for everybody. We had Starbucks coffee donated, Congressman Adam Gray donated donuts. The Rotary Club did lunch for all the tired volunteers afterwards. They provided about 200 hot dogs, chips, and sodas for everybody. It wasn't a hot day, unfortunately. It was a cold chilly day. So we didn't have as many volunteers as we had expected. We did have about 40 people who registered but didn't show up. We're going to chalk that up to the weather. So it was a little bit tough, but we did send people over to the ice cream shop, even though it wasn't very hot. And Cold Stone Creamery donated, or they offered, anybody wearing their Love t-shirts, Love Series t-shirts, got a free ice cream. And I didn't make it over there in time, but I heard, I got pictures from Amy, who said it was packed. And it was a really cool sight to see because everybody was wearing their Love Series t-shirts. Dutch Bros is donating a dollar for every drink on the 25th. Back to Love Series. They also came out and brought a team that did volunteer work. Home Depot also brought out a team that did volunteer work. I believe they helped with the mulch at the police station and fire station. Embroidery Plus printed the t-shirts and heard a lot of disposal with the garbage cans and disposing of the yard waste. Lots more to go over, but I'm running out of time. So I want to make sure real quickly that I thank Mayor Lopez, Vice Mayor Martinez, Councilwoman Otero, Councilwoman Vera, they came out and participated. Also, Police Chief Johnson Hudson for their help with the projects. And being on the committee, Tony Cordell, Joey Chavez, Juliana Gary, they also came out. So I literally left Saturday feeling so blessed that our community came together, and I cannot explain.
We can have the next person. Would like to speak.
How's it going today? I just want to be up on item number 11.
Could you please introduce yourself?
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Andy Hartog.
And I just want to let you know, Andy, that item number 11 will be coming up here pretty soon. You will have an opportunity to speak during that item.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
No problem. Can I have the next person please come up?
Good evening, council. John Warren, City of Series. Recently in the Modesto B, on April 6, in their publication that day, they had a big article about the Lazy Wheels Mobile Home Park in regard to the state of California turning over the responsibility of leasing, for lack of a better word, and assisting those people to be relocated to Stanislaus County and to the City of Series. I don't know if that's factual information. I don't think the state should be dumping their problems on the county and city, the things they should have taken care of a long time ago. So I'm sure today being only the 28th of the month, there hasn't been much progress. And hopefully, the city will have something to report in the near future on that subject. Earlier this evening, I gave to Fallon Martin a flyer about the Memorial Day event on May 26 coming up at the Series Cemetery. The VFW and the American Legion will be conducting a ceremony at the park there at 10:00 AM in the morning. And last year, we asked the city to put this on their website. And of course, they didn't do that, and I understand the reason why. But this is a national holiday, and it's something of a concern that all of us should remember on that day. So maybe they might reconsider and do that this year. Also, on Saturday, May 24, before that event, the veterans groups post the American flags around the cemetery. And we need volunteers to help us do that. We have to drive rebar in the ground, and we have to put the poles up and put the flags up, and also retrieve them on May 26 in the evening around 4:30. So I was thinking the mayor's football team might be a great source of help in this project, and it will allow the team members to earn some of the credits they need for volunteering and stuff during their high school years. So I was going to ask Councilman Martinez to round up his Lions Club folks, maybe to help us as well, but he's not here this evening. Also, in the month of May, we have several other things. First of all, the first Wednesday in May, the Stanislaus County Peace Officers Association will have, conduct a memorial at Lakewood at 10:00 AM in the morning for the officers that served in Stanislaus County that lost their lives. Also, on May the 8th, was the signing of the surrender in Europe of World War II. VE Day in Europe of Victory was actually on May the 7th, but the signing of the paperwork was on May the 8. These are all days that we should, as Americans citizens, remember and consider to take pause for the things that our veterans have done for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. If we can have the next person that would like to speak.
Good evening. My name is Jorge Guerrero. I'm with Series Youth Baseball. I'm a resident of the Series Series for the last 24 years. And last time I was here at the meeting, at the end of March, at the end of the meeting, there was a situation that occurred. I wanted to come in front of the City of Series and everybody here, all eyes for what I said and the things, how it ended up at the meeting. I spoke with Mayor Lopez afterward, and we cleared some information that we had. And I think we're in good track now. We have received the information about the contract that we were working on with Series Youth Baseball. However, we still, there are some things that we need to iron out before we move forward. And unfortunately, Mr. Martinez is not here. I also come to stand behind what I wrote on the email that I sent to the council and the city manager in regards to Mr. Martinez's actions, in which he has been putting roadblocks to Series Youth Baseball for the last 12, 14 months. And it's unfortunate that because of his actions, we're still here, still happen what occurred in the last meeting. Since we took over the board in September 2024, we've been wanting to be partners with the City of Series. We've been working hard to accomplish what other boards had not accomplished, which is bring more baseball to our city. And we have done that, and however, we received roadblocks. For example, yesterday and the day before, we had a tournament in which there were about seven teams from out of town that brought money to the city. And I say for experience, when my travel teams, I coach a couple of travel teams, when we travel, personally, and my family, we spend $1,000 on the way to Irvine, just in hotels and meals. And we leave that in the economy in that city. The same thing happens with other teams traveling here. So we want to make sure that the city understands that we are trying to be partners with the City of Series. However, for us to be able to do that, we need the lights on field three. We have emails. We have the proposals. And we have requested information as to how those funds that were allocated. And last time that we were here, it was said that the money allocated could not be used somewhere else. However, the money is nowhere to be found. We've been asking for information. I don't have the time to go and look for the information and find it on books, on accounting books. Please tell us where the money was spent. There was $113,000 available for our lights on field three. There are kids back here that will benefit from those fields in a few years, playing on that specific field, playing tournaments in that specific field. They practice on those fields, and some of those kids back there have been hit because they lose the ball in the light. And unfortunately, because of Mr. Martinez's issues with me and CYB and misleading the council and misleading information, those lights were not taken care of. The money was there. The money was allocated for those fields. The proposal was submitted in time and form, and nothing was done. I don't know where the money went. I don't know if it was lost and had to be returned to the federal government or whatever entity it came from. But showing that we want to be partners, we want to propose that instead of a three-year contract, we made an eight-year contract with the City of Series. And Series Youth Baseball will pay half of those lights if that project is done in the next 10 months. So that's what I have. That's what I hear. Hopefully, that's taken into consideration. A few days ago, Mr. Martinez, when we had an issue, another issue that he brought up with the batting cages that Sirius Cecil and Sirius Blaze paid for, he told me that he was going to do everything that he was possible in his hands for the city to find $40,000 to pay for those batting cages and so that the city could take them over. So if that's true, what Mr. Martinez said, and I know that he is going to be watching this video, if that's true, the city has $40,000 somewhere. Series Youth Baseball is willing to put another $40,000 so that the lights go on on those fields by the end of the year. Thank you.
My name is Myel Tiberos, and I'm currently the VP of CYB. I'm also a Blaze coach along with Coach Jorge Guerrero. The reason why we came out today was to talk about the councilman, Daniel Martinez, who unfortunately is not here, and the things he's been doing to stop our contract from moving forward. The last meeting that we were here, when we had that little issue, he walked up to us and told us there were three things he was bringing up. And we had heard rumors of more items that he wanted to do. He wants full control of the fields because he's no longer a CYB coach or associated with CYB. So when we heard these rumors, when he saw us here, I think he decided not to move forward with some of those, and he decided to point out three things. Those three things are being handled, and all of a sudden, we get an email, I believe from the city manager, basically saying, "Take down the batting cages. Take down the security cameras." Like, why are we worrying about petty stuff like this? Isn't there bigger issues with this city that Daniel Martinez can be working on instead of that? You know, I had a conversation with Mayor Lopez, and it was a good conversation despite of the last issues that we had when we were here in person. And he agreed that the batting cages should not be taken down, and we're not even sure why that even comes around. And then I remember his issues with us, and he's just trying to make it difficult. All we want to do is put this contract behind us so we can move forward. We have way too much, way too much work. And I don't know if my wife ended up coming tonight, but she can vouch for me how much time I spend on my phone, on my computer, just dealing with CYB stuff. And this contract, and maybe for the future, I don't know if it's a three, five, or seven-year contract, whatever we decide on. I don't know if I'll be here for the next one, but please, do it during the off-season. This has taken way too much of our time and effort. We got enough things to worry about. This is my fourth meeting here. I brought my team. My team Blaze is here, my little 8U team, which, by the way, they won their first tournament a couple of weeks ago, Arsenal. As I mentioned, I've missed three of their practices, and practices are very important to me, as I mentioned the last time. I shouldn't have to be here speaking on behalf of CYB and Blaze, trying to defend ourselves against what I feel is one tyrant on the council board who's supposedly vice mayor. It should be looking out for us instead of against us. So we feel very, very disrespected by the councilmen. Like I said, I wish he would have been here so we could have told them person to person, but like Coach Jorge said, he should be worried more about budgeting. I mean, there's probably going to be more cuts to the police force this year instead of worrying about batting cages and lights, what time they're on, and vendors that come around. The other thing that Coach touched on was the ARPA funds. And I feel like we're beating a dead horse here, but we just want transparency. We just want to know where that money went because it was. We just want to know where that money went, because it was allocated for us, it was allocated for the lights, we had a proposal, as he said, that was done. And now the money's gone. And we did do a couple of projects. We were getting so many, like, great reviews from the park, and we still had more to go, but now those funds are gone. So we're just asking for transparency on where those funds are. We work way too hard, we work a lot of hours for CYB, for these kids out here, to not know where that money went. That's all we want to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, council staff, Gary Condit of Series. I stand here tonight alongside Series Youth Baseball, board members, coaches, parents, and players to demand transparency from the City of Series. Those who have followed city business over the past couple of years know that CYB board members have consistently communicated with the City of Series about urgent upgrades needed on Field Three when it comes to the lights, citing serious safety concerns for players during evening games. City staff and certain elected officials have promised action, yet those promises have proven empty. And even worse, key decisions have been made behind closed doors with no public communication. Both the previous council and this current body have enjoyed spending sprees with ARPA money. In June of 2023, the council dedicated $200,000 for improvements at George Costa Fields, which is a staple in Series. However, as reported at the March 24th council meeting, only $88,000 roughly has been spent, which left about $113,000 unspent. The remaining money has since been diverted to other ARPA projects. CYB President Jorge Guerrero provided the city with an estimate for $77,000 to fix the lights on Field Three, well within the budget of $113,000. Yet the city slow-rolled the process, misled not only CYB, but the very residents you all serve. Let's be clear, only the lights on Field Three needed to be replaced, not the entire field. I strongly urge the mayor, council, to direct city staff to explain why the lights on Field Three were not replaced, despite having the adequate funds, and present a clear plan to get this crucial project back on track and work with CYB. There is a concerning pattern here with this council when it comes to taking advantage of our local sports organizations. Whether intentional or not, it's wrong. From this scenario, where funding was promised and pulled away from CYB, to the attempt to raise fees on Series Youth Soccer from $7 to $50 in a behind-closed-doors meeting with President Lou Tosti. The trend is troubling, and it's wrong. I encourage all Series residents to pay close attention to the actions of this council, especially when it comes to our children and recreation. Finally, I just want to applaud CYB President Jorge Guerrero, Vice President Ishmael Antiveros, and Series Youth Soccer President Lou Tosti for just constantly standing up for their organizations, and most importantly, the kids, because that's what it's about. And as someone who made a public information request on this topic, it's not clear where the $113,000 went. And that's alarming, and it should be alarming to all of you. So with that said, I hope the City of Series gives some transparency to this topic, because again, that's the public's money, it's taxpayer money, and we should all know where it went. So I hope you have a good meeting and good night. Thank you.
If we can have the next person, please come up. Is there anybody else? Let's go on Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, any letters or any emails, something like that?
No emails were received either.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody, for coming here today. And we will now close Citizens Communications, and we will now move on. Do you need to use the restroom? Councilmember needs to use the restroom. My apologies, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Is that all? Thank you. We are now back, asking the council if there's any conflicts of interest. Seeing none, moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be acted by a roll call vote. Is there any members that would like to pull an item, Mr. Casey?
Item number four, please.
Any of the other councilmembers? Going out to the public, is there any item one through six that you would like to pull?
Number six.
Number six. Thank you very much. Bring this item back to the council for a motion. Motion in a second.
Motion to approve one, two, three, and five.
All second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Aye.
Councilmember Otero.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Sounds good. Item number four, Councilmember Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I was a candidate, I came to a lot of city council meetings. And back in June of 2021, the city council passed a resolution 2021, 2021, 2021, 57. And Mr. Mayor, you're the only one left from that council, so it's really a question to you. In June the 14th, 2021, did you expect that here in April the 28th, 2025, we would be spending over a million dollars for the fire protection of the City of Series? $695,000 of it to the city of Modesto, and another $400,000 for training. You know, I'm in a business where we have contract workers all the time, and contract workers can be a definite benefit to any organization. But typically, the contractor pays for their own training. So it's just a question, did you expect to be, we'd be approving over a million dollars for fire protection here the 28th day of April 2025? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. I expected that the public services would outweigh the cost. And I know there is a public meeting we're having, correct, Mr. Doug Dunkford? We're having a meeting coming up so we can tell the public where we stand and discuss the numbers and moving forward and seeing what the costs are, whether or not we will continue with the contract. So I think there will be an opportunity to discuss that further, councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate you looking into it. Thank you. Okay, is there any other questions by the council? We'll take this out to the public. Is there any comments or questions on number four? I bring this item back for a motion and a second.
Motion to approve item four on the consent calendar.
All second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
This is item number six, authorizing the city manager to accept donated funds to be used for the purchase of a buildout of a 2025 Chevy Tahoe for the police K-9 unit.
Any acclerations? Item number six. I didn't look at the staff report, and most of the people that come here from their homes, they probably have no knowledge of that at all. But I'd like to know the reference to the accepted donated funds for this resolution. Who's paying for it? How much is it? And is there ever a conflict of interest when somebody donates funds for particular items? I'd like to know, maybe the people behind me would like to know where the money comes from, who's donating it, how much? And that's my question.
Good question, Chief.
Thank you, Gene, for the opportunity to explain this. So the money is coming from the Corson Foundation for K-9 Specialization, which is a trust that was set up for just K-9 units in our area. So they reached out to our K-9 Association and, together with our Fleet Services, and the company doing the outfitting, Next Gen Alpha, which is in Sacramento, and they were able to get one of the only Chevy Tahos, the 2025 Chevy Tahos that is police-rated. The only other one we found was in Colorado. So together, they came up with a plan to give us the money to purchase this vehicle. The amount of money that is being donated to the City of Series is $133,025.15, and it's in the staff report how it's broken down in there. I don't see that this is any conflict of interest.
I just wanted to know, you know, for myself, because I didn't look at the staff report, and citizens, you know, they, I don't know if they read these things, but if they do, they might be surprised, you know, where's this money coming from, and what's it gonna be used for, different things. Is the vehicle itself really high in the rest of its, for the training or something?
So the vehicle itself costs $66,980.90. The purchase of the LPRs, which is the license plate reader, is $18,259.80. The purchase of the radio that goes in the vehicle is $7,722.27. And the cost for the vehicle buildout, which is gonna be the cage, the air conditioner, the sensors, the door pop, all the lights and siren is $40,062.18.
Can you give me one of those dicks here? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the council? Go ahead, councilmember.
So I just want to add, I'm actually extremely grateful for Corson Foundation for providing this to our police department, because as you see in the staff report and the attachments, it is very costly. And it's important for our police department to have a vehicle that is efficient for all the services that they provide to the community, especially for the K-9 unit.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience before we close out? Okay. Oh, actually, Rosalind, I just saw your button. Go ahead. Go ahead, Shirley. Go ahead.
I want to say congratulations for getting donations. Now that's how you do it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Councilmember.
Thank you, Otero, for bringing that up. With the loss of the dog, I know we recently had lost one that had to retire. I believe that's what happened. And so it's nice that we're gonna be able to get another one and be able to increase our force. If we can't do it in manpower, at least we can do it in dog power. So I appreciate the foundation to be willing to help our city and our police department. And I look forward to, and I agree, Shirley, grants are the only way, really, right now, especially in these tough times right now, that's the only way we're gonna get through. And I'm grateful for the donators who And I'm grateful for the donators who were made this possible for the city and for the residents, because ultimately, those are the ones that are going to benefit the most of the residents out in the community. Thank you, and I fully support this.
Okay, thank you. I bring this item back to the council for motion and a second.
Motion to approve, I'm six on the calendar.
All second.
We get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Moving on to unfinished business, adopting the amended City Council Rules and Procedures Handbook dated April, 2025, to add the Pledge of Allegiance procedures, amend the committee appointment process, and include language regarding their certificates. City Clerk, Fallon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There are three proposed amendments to the Council Rules and Procedures Handbook that's being presented to you tonight. The first amendment is a result of a council member referral and consensus that was provided on March tenth at the city council meeting to incorporate CUSD, Series Unified School District students leading the Pledge of Allegiance. The proposed edits can be found on page ten of the handbook, which is Attachment B. The edits state that the city staff will work with CUSD to have a student attend each regular city council meeting during the month school is in session to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. And when school is not in session, a member of city council will lead the Pledge of Allegiance as it, as it is done now. The second amendment is a result of a city council discussion that occurred regarding the Measure H Subcommittee at the March twenty-fourth city council meeting. At that time, council expressed their desire to have the option to hold board commission and committee interviews in an open city council meeting or through the appointed Subcommittee Option. The proposed edits can be found on page twenty-nine and allows for council to choose between an open meeting interview process or the Subcommittee Process. If council decides to opt for an open meeting interview process, the interview questions will be included on the application that applicants will fill out and submit to the clerk's office. City council will receive all submitted applications and questions in redacted form as part of the agenda packet. At the council meeting, the appoint, that the appointments will be agendized for, the applicants may attend in person or via Zoom and provide a brief introduction and interest statement. Excuse me. Council will not be able to ask the applicants additional questions and will make a selection based on the applicant's application, answers to the interview questions, and their introduction and interest statement. If the council decides to take the route to appoint via a Subcommittee, the process will look much like it has in the recent past, where a Subcommittee is formed by the mayor and a member of council. They would conduct interviews prior to a council meeting. And at that council meeting, the mayor will make a recommendation of who to appoint, followed by council consensus. The third and final edit to the handbook can be found on page sixteen, and it's asking that certificate requests be made with at least two-week advance notice for the time in which they're needed. This provides staff the appropriate amount of time to gather the necessary information required to prepare certificates. With that said, I'm here for any questions, if you have any.
We'll open this to the public first. Is there anyone in the chambers attending this or on Zoom that would like to make a comment on this item?
City of Series, Chamber, blah, blah, blah. Fallon, I just wanted to clarify something. The certificates, because we, the Chamber asks for several certificates for grand openings and different events, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So you need two weeks prior to the event for a certificate?
Yes, we're requesting at least a two-week notice. Obviously, we will use discretion and prepare them with less notice when necessary, but we do prefer a two-week notice.
Thank you. We just got two requests for grand openings for the next, within the next two weeks. So we'll get them to you as soon as we can.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom and no emails received.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll bring this item back to the council for any discussion. Rosalinda, was that your button pressed from previous or is that current, currently? Okay, sounds good. So we'll go with Councilmember Vera first.
Thank you. The button's on my surgical side, so it's entertaining. I guess I had a couple concerns or questions regarding this, because in the past, we've had two council, members of the council as a whole. And under the new amendment, it says the mayor will be on every single one, which is why I just wanted, because I know with the Planning Commission, we had two of our former planning commissioners, and it wasn't you on there. And then even with like the Measure H, although I was on Measure H, it doesn't necessarily mean that I would be the next one and are, may not even be available. So I just want to see if it's going to be open to the council as a whole, and we agree, or you and/or point? Or is it you and one other person every single time, and we're adjusting what we're currently doing now in a second way? And then the next question, oh, no, that one, was the two Xs on page two fifty-five, I think, is to the same item? Or that was a different item, huh? Okay. And then I, kind of reiterating kind of what Brandy had mentioned regarding two-week notice when possible, I know certain things happen, and I want to make sure we just leave that open, like if someone suddenly has to have a early retirement, that we still have that available to them, because I think that's my only concern, is I would hope that we give you at least two weeks' notice, because things happen. But I also know things happen in the other direction. I would hope that we would be able to make those adjustments as needed. I think those were the notes that I have written down here. Thank you.
Serena, I think that question was for you. I didn't write, I wasn't involved in the request. I wasn't involved in the.
About having the mayor on every single committee? Oh, that was Serena.
That was between them.
If the language is in there where it maybe says mayor or selection by mayor for the committee, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I think that would be fair, just in case the mayor may be recusing himself or, you know, can't sit on a, on an interview.
Yeah, that's no problem for us to make that change. We used that language because that's what stated it currently in the handbook. But we can simply make that change and just say two members of council. That would be inclusive of the mayor and council members.
You've done that before.
Okay, I was gonna say, because the Planning Commission, one was two council members and not the mayor. And then the other question, I think I just saw it and then I lost it, was regarding the kids and the pledge. I thought we also discussed about maybe having like the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts or other non, just school-related organizations or the veterans. I know we have a couple in the crowd, especially during key months when maybe schools aren't available, because I still think they still deserve to be recognized. And I think that was the one thing I want to mention or ask anyways. Obviously, it could be shot down, it's no big deal. But I just think that it's important that we recognize not just our youth, but other organizations, especially when the youth aren't available, that the Boy Scouts can come or the Girl Scouts, or maybe even if the boy, you know, the baseball or soccer want to come out, I'm okay with that as well. Just for the record, if no one else is, that's okay. But I just want to make sure we have those options available and at least make it public that that's where I feel on that. I don't think it should just be just a certain school each month, although I like that idea. But I think it should be open to all youth organizations and even our veteran organizations that may not, are still in their youth in older years. Thank you.
So I do have something to add to that. For Veterans Day and Memorial Day, I recommend adding to the council procedure, having, offering it to a veteran to come and invite them to do the pledge of, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And also, during the summer, instead of the council doing the Pledge of Allegiance, I feel that one of us up here can select someone to come up, or can select a student or anybody else or an organization that would like to come in and lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I was just thinking about this as you guys were commenting. Would it be a good idea to maybe have the folks who are interested in doing the Pledge of Allegiance to maybe sign up before, yeah, sign up in events? So that way, the city clerk can even put their name right next to it so that they'll be recognized.
Or even apply a year out, so this is the ones that are doing the pledge each month. And, you know, everyone knows, oh my good, you know, Sinclair's going to be here on this school, and Laker's going to be here on this month, and, or each, you know, because we have those meetings each year, and then the families and the schools can also prepare. And then that gives Fallon almost, you know, a year to prepare for the entire year.
I guess the goal would be to be more organized on doing that. Do you have something to say? I'm sorry.
I would say, I believe that that's why you reached out to the Series Unified School District to get on a schedule or routine of how you'll invite students. Okay.
So just clarification real quick, you, you were saying you want a veteran during Memorial Day and Veterans Day, but school's in, so we're going to usurp the students and then intersperse the veterans in those two dates.
Yeah, if we could reserve those days for a veteran to come in, I would, I think that would be great.
What about the Fourth of July as well, since schools are closed anyways? I think that's a pretty big holiday as well, and that might be easier to get a veteran out and not interrupt the schools as well.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that either.
The one point of clarification, Mayor and Council on that, is there are times during the year where those holidays fall on, on council days, and those meetings can sometimes get canceled. So we may have to work around some of those considerations as well. But we, but we can include the caveat into the rules and procedures.
I think that's kind of my, what I kind of meant without saying, and I appreciate you bringing that clarity, is we usually don't have a meeting on the Fourth of July or Memorial Day, but the council meeting and/or around that day, that would be significant. I think it's important to recognize our veterans that put their time and service and their dedication and loyalty to our community and making sure our nation is safe from where we are today.
So is it safe to say that my suggestion about there'd be some form of, I mean, would, do you prefer an application process or just an email or phone call? I just want to make sure.
I think that's something that will work out on the back end and roll that out somehow.
Okay.
And we'll certainly let the council know what that will look like when it's developed.
Okay, as long as the council's okay with that.
I think, I think what Fallon needs is basically, what if we do it as a school district, they can predict it out, you know, months in advance. What's going to be tricky part is during the non-school months. And I'm going to work that out so that we can have the council, you know, help out and make sure we have people in place before, you know, at least for a month in advance.
Yeah, that's fine. And in the case that obviously no one is able to attend or they don't show, we just go back to the way we've been doing it, just make it happen. Yeah. Makes sense.
I do have another recommendation to add to that. I feel that it's an honor for students or others to come in and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to request that they receive a certificate from the city, just appreciating them for taking the time to come in.
I'm okay with that. Means more certificates for you, Fallon, that's what we're looking at you. Mr. Casey, council member, I've seen you push your button, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In my district, we have a Central Valley Academy. It's a private school, and I'd like you to reach out to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think at the end of the day, anybody who's interested, who falls within those categories would be great. And Fallon, we'll just leave that up to you. Okay. Is there any additional comments or questions?
If there are not any additional comments or questions, I'd just like to recap so we're certain that we're all on the same page.
Well, we actually, we didn't even, nobody discussed Measure H or, anybody want to add to that?
So for the interview process, we're going to change the wording to not have it state mayor and a council member, it's just two members of the council. And then for the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll do the CUSD student while school's in session, with the exception of Memorial Day and Veterans Day. In addition, we'll do Fourth of July, have it be a veteran organization of some sort. And for each meeting outside of school, we will form some sort of process of getting someone to come in and do the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll provide a certificate for each person, each organization or group that comes in to lead.
Councilmember Casey just pressed his button. Go ahead, sir.
City Clerk, don't forget the Central Valley Christian School there, not just the public school. Thank you.
So not just public schools, but also, okay. Gotcha.
And I think, just for clarification, when it's written, you mentioned veteran organization. I think it should be veteran or veteran organization.
Got it. Would that include like the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts if they wanted to come out, maybe on a non-school month or a month where there's more than one meeting? Like maybe a school does it one month and an organization do it the second one?
Yeah, that's where, I believe during the summer or when the students are off for spring break or winter break, is when the council can invite one of those groups or anyone else and maybe refer their name to the city clerk.
I just wanted to make sure there's clarity on.
Yeah.
My son was a Boy Scout, my girls were Girl Scouts, and I was a Girl Scout leader, so I'm a little.
So in, in the amendment, you can be vague, and then we can have anybody within those categories participate for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Correct, yeah.
Because I don't want to make sure, I don't want to, maybe we didn't think of somebody today, but something might pop up, so.
Yeah, I don't think we'll put any specific organization names aside from just the school district in there for now. We'll just use language that references, you know, a veteran or veteran organization or any other kind of service group within the community.
Okay, I like that.
Is it school districts with an S or just?
Inclusive of Central Valley Academy.
Okay.
Because we have the other, I just want to make sure, because we actually have more than just that one. I just want to make sure it includes the private schools that we, because we have more than just the Christian Academy, there's another school right in front of that, that's an Aspire school too. I just want to make sure we're inclusive of all schools within our districts.
City Attorney, we're good? I think that's your direction. Is there any, there's no motion or anything of that sorts?
Yes, there will be action taken.
Okay.
I recommend, a recommended motion would be a motion to approve the resolution making the changes to the handbook in addition to the changes made by the council this evening. So you don't have to recite every single one, it's just more confirmation that what the city clerk has stated is correct.
Okay, so a motion to approve a resolution as discussed for item number seven.
And the amendments.
And the amended, amendments as discussed.
Looking for a second?
All second.
I get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, we're moving on to a public hearing. Ordinance of the City Council and the City of Series adopting a rezone to change the zoning map for designation for the Administrative Professional Zoning District to the R5 Multi-Family Residential Zoning District for a 2.1 acre site. Señor, great, this is yours, right? Go for it.
So I have, I have Ms. Leah Swolaski here, and she's going to present the Evanshire for this evening.
Welcome back, Leah.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. This is the Evanshire Senior Living Project. So this project is a site plan approval and a rezoning of a 2.1 acre site for the development of a four-story, eighty-one-unit senior living facility located behind the current Evanshire Gardens Event Center at seventeen forty-eight Evans Road. The access for the project site will be off of Stonehaven Way with an emergency vehicle access point from Evans Road. After the applicant has secured approval for the rezone in the site plan, they do come back to officially parcel out the parcel. So there will be two separate parcels, and the new address will be issued off of Stonehaven Way. This is the site plan. You can see the entrance off of Stonehaven Way on the side, on the left side, you'll see that it is behind the current Evanshire Gardens Event Center on an unused portion of the site. The site currently has access to Stonehaven Way, so this is not a new access created for the project. Stonehaven Way leads to this parcel, so they do have legal street access to Stonehaven. You'll notice right now that the general plan land use designation for the site is HDR. It happens when you redo your general plan designation that sometimes the land use designation does not match the zoning. In this instance, you'll see that the general plan designation, which does allow high-density residential uses, is currently what exists on the site on the front and the back. But what you'll see on the next slide is the whole site is actually zoned AP Administrative Professional. This happens sometimes when you have an active use, and in order to not make the use legal non-conforming, or if they need to do some updates to the site, and you don't want to make it so that they can't, you leave the. or if they need to do some updates to the site, you don't want to make it so that they can't, you leave the zoning as the use is. And so right now, the event center isn't allowed use in the administrative professional site. So the applicant is proposing then to turn just the back half of the site to R five, which would then be consistent with the general plan land use designation. So it won't interfere with the event center. The event center will become its own parcel. It'll still stay AP. And then the back will be R five so that you have a residential zoning designation that is consistent with the existing land use designation. So that's why you're not contemplating a GP amendment tonight. The general plan is already in place. It's just changing the zoning on that back 2.1 acres. What you'll read in this report is probably new. This site is, can avail itself of state density bonus law, which means that when you have 100% senior housing project, it does not have to be an affordable housing project, just 100% senior project. They are able to take advantage of a state density bonus. With that comes concessions and waivers. Concessions can be granted to a project to, if you can identify costs that make the project unbuildable, or waiver would be a reduction in current development standards that could preclude the development of the project. So in this instance, the project is asking for a waiver of the height limitation in the R five zoning district. The R five zoning district regulates height to be either four stories or 40 feet, whichever is less. So that line is a little problematic because you can't really get four stories and 40 feet. So it's like we have an ordinance that recognizes 40 feet in height or four stories, but you can't really get four stories. So they're not asking for a huge difference. The code acknowledges the ability to have four stories. But in order to get those four stories, you do need 10 more feet. And so the project is asking for that waiver to allow the construction of that fourth floor and asking for the additional 10 feet. But the sighting of the building is in such a way, because we thought it might be an issue for some of the neighbors. You can see from this site plan that there's ample landscaping and you can see kind of mature tree growth and how those four stories would be perceived by the two neighbors that actually have a backyard that may cause a problem. You'll see that the, the tree eliminates the true view of any kind of second-story window. If you look up, yes, you may see some height, but you're not going to have people staring into backyards, staring into windows, which is a common fear of homes. But those homes are two stories, so they are not single-family, one-story homes. And they only occur on one side. The other parcel behind the site is actually the Behavioral Health Campus, undeveloped. And then the majority of the site that faces Stonehaven is set back over 50 feet. And it's really people's side yards that don't have views and there's not a lot of balconies on that side. So you're talking a much larger space between any real neighbors other than two that would have any concern for that height issue. This is the landscape plan. You'll see there's a planting on the side where there's residential neighbors. There's ample planting in the front along Stonehaven. And then there's existing trees right now already separating the site from the Behavioral Health Campus. This is just some elevations of the site. The builder likes, fills the Italian, Italianate styles inviting for the, for the community that comes to these types of facilities. Just again, some more, there's changes in the elevation. The whole thing is not one four-story square. There's ins and outs. So it doesn't feel very large, even though it is four stories. The project is exempt per SEQUA Section 15332 infill development. It's consistent with the general plan. Its development within the city limit, it has no value of the habitat or rare endangered species. It's just a site that's mowed by the current property owner. And the site is served by all utilities and public services. We recommend that the city council approve the first reading and wave for further reading and ordinance adopting a rezone to change the zoning map designation from AP to R five and to approve the site development permit for the 81-unit senior living facility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing now. Is anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item?
As a commissioner for Stanislaus County Commission on Aging, I would like to see this go through. There's a lot of people aging, as I am, and they're going to give up their houses and go into single living developments. And when they do, that will make more housing available to the public also. So this could be a win-win situation. Please give it your serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Allen? Oh, Mr. Warren. Come on up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sat through the planning commission meeting on this project recently. And there was some discussion, but I gave it some thought afterwards. There's going to be some trees planted to obscure vision obstructions or one party looking into another party's residence. My question is, how tall do these trees have to be to prevent that vision line from occurring? And I have a follow-up question is, when these trees are planted, how tall are they going to be? Are they going to have to grow up over a 30-year period to develop this kind of landscaping block? Or are they going to be planted at the correct height, all grown up? So this doesn't happen? And are they going to have leaves on them 24/7 and 365 days of the year? Because the leaves and branches are what forms the vision obscurement from one property to the other. Other than that, I think it's a worthwhile. 81 units means 81 houses in series where people like me won't be living. We'll be living over there, so you can sell those other 81 houses. So you got like 164 or whatever available. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Leah, do you have any maybe input or?
Architect is here. I don't know if they want to have a better answer for the height the tree needs to be, but you figure, you know, two stories is about 30 feet, so probably 30 feet to block the view if you are standing outside looking through your window. On the type of tree can be dictated, or if you want to add a certain size box tree that will then be bigger when it's planted. You do have to keep in mind the bigger the tree, the harder it is to keep alive. So you want a smaller the tree at first gives it a better chance of survival, but you can require that they plant larger trees on that side that has a neighborhood backyards. Picus trees, when you plant them, within two years, they're tall enough, I think they're 20, 20 feet within two, two to three years. So you're not asking, and yes, there'll be leaves. Most trees do. Probably it's a science lesson. What do you call evergreens or have leaves year-round? So if they're not evergreen variety, I, they probably lose their leaves in the winter, but you know, it's not going to be perfect year-round, but for the most part, there will be full wage probably blocking those views.
Thank you, Leah. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else?
Windows not going to have blinds or curtains?
I wouldn't know that, Leah.
They will have, I mean, the architect is here if you want to confirm, but yet I would imagine that they'll be blind.
Get rid of your neighbors watching your windows through your blinds or your curtains.
Can you please state your name into the mic, ma'am?
We just want to make sure we know what your name is.
Can you please state your name?
Could you come up to the microphone? The people on Zoom can't hear you. Sorry.
Catherine Reeves.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Is there anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Peter Sandholt. I'm the owner's representative and the architect for the project. In answer to the tree question, we have cypress currently shown on the, on the landscape plan along that side that we're discussing. And as we all may or may not know, cypress trees are evergreen and they grow very rapidly. Terms of shades and blinds, yes, there will be shades and blinds on windows in the facility. Any, any other questions? I'll.
That's what we're here for. Ask questions and get answers. Okay, is there anybody else on the side?
You need to be serious.
Welcome.
You sound kind of silly. Have you ever been to Disneyland? Let's be tinkerbell. You ever been to Disneyland? They have plastic trees. Is there any reason why these trees have to be organic trees? These people are going to be in these positions with their windows. Find out from a source where they could get 25-foot plastic trees with leaves that never fall down, never have to take care of, and the tree probably stay there for eons. Just a thought.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom and there were no emails received.
The public hearing is now closed. I bring this item back for discussion from the council. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Rosalinda, you are up.
Thank you. And this is probably for the architect. I just couldn't find it. I was told it was on there and I just couldn't find what page where it shows that it's EV compliant with the California Building Code.
Yes, we, we have a parking tabulation on the project site plan. And that shows the number of EV stalls and future EV stalls that are currently in the design. But as we all know, we have to meet your ordinances and current codes. So by the time this project is constructed, we will meet whatever the code requirements are at the time.
Thank you. Yeah, that was, I think, my only concern that I had was regarding the Cal Green laws regarding the EV parking. Thank you.
I guess I'll just stay here in case.
Yeah, no, no problem. Councilmember Otero.
So this question might be more for city staff, but I appreciate you staying up just in case we need the answer from you. I did see that there was a community meeting that was brought forward, sounds like by the developer. Is that something that is ran through City Hall first? Or is that just something they set up and we don't have any part of that?
Just knowing that they were adjacent to residential uses, it was suggested that they have a meeting. They ran their hearing notice by us. They made sure that their noticing radius was appropriate per current policy. And then they had, I was supposed to be there last minute, was unable to attend. But we knew the meeting was happening. They had two members attend. Those individuals did come to Planning Commission. Nobody made it. Nobody, their concerns were traffic and, and noise from the event center. Nobody raised the issue about the trees. I was just anticipating issues about the view, so I asked the applicant to prepare and no one even cared about the trees or the height, so.
Thank you. I was just curious because in the future, if there are community meetings for future developments and that's put out by the developer, the landowner, is it possible for us to, for the council to be made aware and then possibly putting it on our website or, you know, social media as we've been talking about public outreach? That might be a little bit more helpful just to get more public participation. Maybe the, some residents missed the notice. That's all I ask of those. Thank you.
Okay, is Councilmember Casey, I just saw your button. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the Planning Commission, we talked about the entrance through Keystone Court, I think. But is that, is that going to be the only entrance when this project's completed? Or it looks like on the map that they'll be able to come on Evans Road too?
No, the, the Evans Road is purely EVA, Emergency Vehicle Access only. And in discussions with the fire department, that entrance off of Evans Road will be gated. So all of the public or residents coming to this facility will be coming via Stonehaven.
So is that true with the construction too? All the construction vehicles will be going through that court?
That I don't know. I mean, I'm sure we can, I'm sure we can dictate that construction comes through.
Thank you, thank you. Like surely I, I know that our city needs places for people to get older than us, you know? I've been blessed to be able to take care of a couple of grandparents, a couple of aunts and uncles. And it's difficult to find a place for them to go to be comfortable. I look forward to the construction of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Councilmember, you're fine.
Sorry, I had one more thing to add. I too think this is a great project and it does allow for our seniors to remain in the community because we do lack the senior housing. The other one we have is Whitmore Oaks. I know there's a few assisted livings, so I do appreciate this project coming forward to the City of Series.
Okay. And if there's no additional comments or questions, we come back to the council for a motion in a second. The public hearing is now closed, by the way.
Motion to approve. Meet of the agenda.
Second.
Um, Kenny, we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey.
Aye.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero.
Aye.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Item number nine, concurring the supporting the consolidated plan for fiscal year. Yes, sir. Is there, we need, what do you mean, we need two motions? Oh, you mean two motions as far as two resolutions? Yeah, there's, yeah, that's correct. Can we, can we go back to the original motion and motion for the two resolutions, Rosalinda? Is that correct?
The action that was taken was to approve the entire item. So I think that the motion and the vote is sufficient.
Still stands. All right, Doug, you're getting me in trouble over here by the city attorney. I take that back, Rosa. You were doing great. Moving on, item number nine. Concurring the supporting consolidated plan for fiscal year 2025, 2029, annual action plan AAP, the fiscal year 2025, 2026, prepared the Stanislaus Urban County and Stanislaus Home Consortium. Is this you, sir?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and community members. This is the fiscal year 2025 Stanislaus Urban County Home Consortium Consolidated Plan. The city is a member of the Stanislaus Urban County Consortium, Community Development Block Grant, funded through HUD. The consortium includes Stanislaus County, the City of Series, Houston, Newman, Oakdale, Patterson and Watford. Participation in the consortium enables the county and participating jurisdictions to access CDBG program funds directly from the federal government rather than compete for such findings through the state. The goals for the consortium as established under the federal CDBG program guidelines include to provide decent housing, provide suitable living environment and to expand economic opportunities. This fiscal year 2025, 26, where the annual action plan, the City of Series will be allocated approximately 218, 100,000, 623,000 under Community Development Block Grant and 106,408 under the home investment partnership. We'll talk about the overview of the consolidated plan, the needs analysis for the community engagement results, consolidated plan goals and additional engagement opportunities. So the consolidated plan is a planning document that is required by HUD and is updated every five years in order to receive federal funding. The consolidated plan serves as the framework planning document for a community-wide dialogue to identify the top housing needs, community development concerns for low and moderate income populations and to set informed priorities for actions and uses of these funds. Current 2025 and 2029.
Important, important order, council members concerned that it may or may not be the right slide. Are we good?
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you very much.
The current 2020 consolidated draft plan of, is of 220 pages was posted to the county, Stanislaus County website on April 4th for a 30-day public review with anticipation to have it submitted to HUD in May. Feedback gathering during community meetings will be forwarded to the county to be included in the final report. For Series, we notified the county that community members shared their need for capital improvement along Central and Hackett Road, along with support for senior housing. During the five-year consolidated plan period, the Stanislaus Urban County expects to receive approximate, the approximation for these specific grants. So the CDBG grant anticipated fund is 11 million over the next five years. The home is scheduled to look at 6 million. The home is scheduled to look at 6 million over the next five years. And the ESG grant is a million dollars over the next five years. The Community Block Grant is a cornerstone of the affordable housing and community development industry to serve low, moderate income persons. Funding can support a wide variety of activities from infrastructure and economic development projects and serves to to community centers, affordable housing acquisitions, rehabilitation, just to name a few. The Home Investment Partnership provides funding to a range of activities, including building, buying, and our rehabilitation, affordable housing, rent or homeownership, or providing direct rental assistance to low-income people. The emergency grant, ESG, is designed to assist people to quickly regain suitable sustainability in housing after experiencing a housing crisis and or homelessness. As you can see, there's a lot of flexibility built into these funding programs, which enables the grantee in this collaborative community engagement process to have a fair amount of flexibility of establishing the top community needs and uses of these funds for low and moderate income populations over the next five years. Consolidated plan effort was initiated in December of last year with the technical analysis, which is still ongoing and will be updated to account for input from the community outreach efforts. In February, a community survey was circulated where approximately 188 responses were received throughout the county. Following the community meeting and the public review period, the final draft will be brought to final public hearing in May for approval. The joint consolidated plan and the Stanislaus Urban County Annual Action Plan and the city of Turlock's Annual Action Plan are then anticipated to be submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban by late May. The consolidated plan serves as the framework planning document to identify the key needs in the community. So they broke it down, the needs for four main characters. So throughout the survey that they had, we looked at affordable housing, community development and services, economic development and broadband and addressing homelessness. The community outreach process for the consolidated plan included a survey of Stanislaus Planning Area, online community meetings, stakeholders interviews, in-person community meetings, agency phone and email consultations and consultations with the local continuum of care. Draft documents were made available to the public via the county's website at the Office of the Planning and Community Development, respective consortium members, and was emailed directly to known interested parties by consortium staff and the 188 response from the community survey. These five topics are being, were most important in the community survey. Highlighting the highest housing needs, this refers to more affordable housing for senior families and individuals with disabilities. Homelessness as a significant concern across the community identifying, people identified the need for more homeless shelters, prevention and outreach programs and supportive housing. Emphasize support for domestic violence and elder abuse victims. Our community noted the need for increased outreach and support services for victims of domestic violence and elder abuse. Prioritizing community facilities, this referred to feedback about developing enhancing parks and recreational facilities, healthcare and youth centers. Another important issue was the need to improve infrastructure, particularly for transportation, including making safety improvements, especially for pedestrians such as sidewalks and streetlights, as well as roadway improvements for auto travel. The results from what they received so far shows almost half of the people emphasized the need for more affordable housing for seniors, which was at 48%. 42% said there's a need for more affordable homeownership, housing and more affordable housing for families. 36% together was for affordable housing options for people with disabilities and for assistance with purchasing a home. On the economic development side, there were some economic development projects that were identified as significant needs by community members. A third identified the need to make improvement to storefronts. More than half said it is very or extremely important to support redevelopment or demolition of abandoned properties and to provide financial assistance for community organization. 40% said it was very extremely important to provide financial assistance to entrepreneurs and local businesses. When asked about actions to address homelessness, there was substantial support for the actions shown on this, what we see here. 71% of respondents said it was very or extremely important to support homeless prevention and outreach and to support transitional supportive housing programs. 65% said it is very or extremely important to increase access to homeless shelters. Their survey also asked about community development and services, including several shown on this, this slide before you. The four services rated highest in importance were trash and debris removal, youth activities, anti-crime programs and access to health services. Based on the feedback and data analysis so far, the draft consolidated plan identifies these five, five goals. Support of affordable housing and promote access housing options, work to address and prevent and mitigate homelessness, improve public infrastructure and facilities, provide and ensure access to essential public services and administration, which refers to how these funds are administered and assure compliance with federal requirements. These are a couple of the goals that were set, that have been set for the consortium. As you can see, improve public infrastructure and facilities between 2025 to 2029. Approximately households to serve would be about 500. Here's a list of proposed CDBG projects throughout the county. As you can see, for the city of Series, we continue with the Marl Village ADA Improvement Project. This is the location right off Whitmore. And so we will continue to finish the Marl Village. This is the sidewalks and the ADA accessibility in that area. Tonight, staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution of concurrence and support of the consolidated plan for the fiscal year 2025 to 2029 and annual action plan for 2025 to 2026 prepared by the Stanislaus Urban County Stanislaus Homes Consortium, for which Series is a member.
Okay. We'll open up the public hearing to the public. Anybody has comments on this item? Please step up.
And I do, sorry, and I do have the county consultant and the county representative on Zoom too, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody in the public? Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
And no emails?
And there were no emails received.
Bring this item back to the council for discussion. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, when the funds are, it looks like that's the, the amounts that are there is what the entire county is getting and then they're split out to the different cities. Are those split out just to the projects that are listed in one, towards your last slide? Or is it funding that will get, be given directly to the city? I just clarify, I know the funding is going to come to the city, but is it for projects that are already?
Correct, it'll be, it'll be for the, the project that's already, we've already started. And so that will go there once that project is completed and there's any funding, then we can start another project.
Okay. And then the Community Development Block Grant, it says that's for public facilities and services. Typically in the past, how is that used in Series?
So right now that, that is being used for the Marl Village for the infrastructure. We do have other options that come up. I believe the CDBG home, the home, one that we have for first-time homeowners to go for, to help with that is in the pipeline. But for this project right now, the only project that we have for the city of Series is the Marl Village one.
Included in that, because it says public services, would that include like the police department? Or does it have to be specific to like the infrastructure needs, like building out, you know, like you said, sidewalks and things like?
So with CDBG, my understanding it's for low to moderate income areas, so for housing infrastructure. And I believe the consultant or Anna, you know, the, and I don't think we could use it specifically for like law enforcement.
And I only ask because there's the 13% in there that would like to see like anti-crime programs as well.
Yeah, so, so we could, we can partnership, we can partner with a nonprofit that provides like the Parent Resource Center, those kind of program, those kind of agencies to help with education on crime prevention, domestic violence, partnership with women, with Haven, doing some of those community outreaches.
And also with the funding, is that ever used for parks? So if we wanted to upgrade a park and maybe add struck, play structures for children with disabilities or anything like that?
That I would have to come back to council for because I do not have the answer at this time.
Thank you, Julian.
Thank you. Good questions. Councilmember Vera?
Um, I kind of, I think Serena kind of touched a lot of my questions. Um, I noticed there wasn't anything really listed in the home regarding the allocation. And I thought last year we had other projects listed as backup projects on the plan when we put, I believe of like a five-year proposal or three-year or something together last year when we submitted our projects. So I didn't see any of those on there.
So this presentation was just for the county consortium, but we'll come back for a specific for the city of Series. Because we have to come back again for the contract under the Urban County.
Okay.
So that will have, and well, once we get the, the okay from the county for the home, we have a couple of projects that we would like to bring.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, because I know Marl Village has been a little vocal online about their concerns about getting the sidewalks done. So I do want to make sure that gets done.
We took it into consideration to the, during a community meeting, the Central and Hackett area was a big concern for the community too. So we're also looking to see how we can utilize some of the, some of that to start that project.
Okay, because I thought part of Central and Hackett is also under a grant and I didn't see Beltran here that was working on the road and some of the gutters and infrastructure there through a different grant. If I.
I believe, I believe you're correct. Yes, yeah, I believe you're correct.
Okay, so I think that was already being addressed and it was in the works because it was going to do sidewalks all the way down to the Central Valley, I believe, or most of down Central and then part of Hackett. So I think that is under a different grant, under Caltrans, correct? I am correct, Sam?
That is, I believe that's a different grant, that's not a part of the CDBG grant.
But I, I just thought it was being addressed. I just want to make sure that the situation is being addressed, not necessarily through this, since that was a concern of the community. I just want the community to know that I hear them, especially in my district, that that is their concern and we are already addressing it through a different grant that was done before they even brought it up with Julian at these community meetings.
Yes, and so just to, most of these projects do require more than just one grant to complete. So looking at, you know, how many, like you said, you know, grants are, are the thing. And so being able to pull for as many grants as we can to complete these projects. Always, you know, looking at with the CDBG in the home, it's low to moderate income areas within the city of Series and providing them with, with the resources that they are requesting.
Okay, and then with that said, does that also mean that it would be able to assist, I thought with, like you said, community type issues, which I thought was code enforcement? If I had read some of the specifics, I know it couldn't do public safety, but I thought it was able to do certain resource, which is what our code enforcement now is doing part-time, at least assisting with our homeless encampments.
Do CDBG funds for code enforcement? But I can, I would have to verify with the county.
Okay, I just want, I, I thought it was because I think we had those discussions before. I just, and again, the laws change, so please, I completely understand that I may be wrong because things change every day with government. But I think if that's a way, and since code enforcement is spending a significant amount of time cleaning out encampments, which is a very low-income, moderately disenfranchised group, I just want to make sure if we can allocate some of those funds if we had some extra laying around, of course. Because I know the RFP for Turlock Consortium is also pending, so there's some additional funding that may be possible. So if that's able to at least allocate and support our public safety when it comes to dealing with some of our unhoused and unsheltered individuals, I would like to also, or we can use ESG, correct? With supporting that part of our code enforcement, would we be able to use ESG funding to support that aspect of our code enforcement?
What I'll do is have to take, get it, sorry. We can verify with HUD if those projects are allowed for public services.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Any additional comments in the council? Okay, can we get a motion and a second?
Is it a discussion? Does it need a motion?
It's a resolution.
I'm, I'll motion to approve item number nine.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Aye. Gotta wait.
Councilmember Casey?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Item number 10. Adopting the necessary findings to approving an energy service contract with Alliance Building Solutions, LOC, approving a finance agreement and related necessary leases, documents with Metro Futures Incorporated to fund the implementation of energy conservation improvements to the city facilities in accordance with the California Government Code, section 421710 to 421718, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. City manager has mentioned to me that this hearing will be postponed to an undetermined city council meeting, but we do need to open up this to public comment as it also was required. So we'll go ahead and open this up to the public. Is there any members of the public that would like to make a comment on this item? I see there's a hand raised on Zoom.
Do you have a hand raised? Jake, your mic is unmuted.
Perfect, good evening, members of the council. Mayor Lopez, this is Jake Torres with Alliance Building Solutions. We're aware that our, oh, our, essentially our gen item is going to be motioned and pushed to a later date. However, we just wanted to state that a lot of the lighting comments that were raised by the public will be addressed through this project to where we have essentially every single facility owned by the city is going to be, have full lighting retrofits between interior and exterior lighting, along with all of the related parks and all of the bolted lighting as well. So our goal here is to hope that we can come back at the May 12th council meeting to do our full presentation, answer any questions and essentially take the council through the full-blown energy efficiency project that's being recommended here for approval.
Thank you very much, Jake. Is there anybody else online?
There are no other hands raised and there were no emails received.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public comment to bring the item back for any discussions or any comments at the moment. Seeing none. So we'll go ahead and move this item hopefully to the next city council meeting. Thank you very much, everybody. Moving on to item number 11. This item is Cannabis Business Pilot Program Evaluation, and the city attorney will go ahead and do a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we have a presentation with the hopes of eliciting some questions, comments, discussion by the council and the public for direction on any changes that we may need to make to the city's cannabis business program. The requirements that we have set forth in the municipal code would have to be modified by ordinance. And so there would be a multi-step process, likely part of it going to Planning Commission, some of it then just proceeding straight to council. So the goal tonight is to get feedback from the council on what you would like to see. So the action that you're taking today is just to give us direction. It's not taking formal action. That would be presented and packaged to you for a future meeting. Let's go ahead and get started with, with the item. The, the main thing that I think we want to tackle today is a wholesale review of the city's cannabis pilot program. We'll call it a pilot program. We call it a pilot program because it hasn't changed and we're hoping to change that title because it's no longer really a pilot program. The program has been in place for a number of years. We were pushing about, I think, almost eight years from when it was first established and created by the, the council with the idea of evaluating what's working, what's not working, and more importantly, answer any concerns or questions the council has about city's process and how it adopts and approves these types of projects and basically take it step by step. See if I can get this to work. There we go. So the three questions that I want the council to focus on, there's many things to discuss, but the three questions that we want the council to focus on, giving us some direction, is the first one being the monetary component. The city's process right now in moving with its, its cannabis projects requires a public benefit amount that's paid to the city. But there is, and there was direction given to move forward with a business tax, a cannabis, a commercial cannabis business tax. So the discussion tonight will entail moving forward in that direction and more importantly, getting feedback from the council on what potential tax rates could look like. The second question for discussion and direction tonight is the use of the development agreement structure. We will go through the ins and outs of that, but generally what that means is that the municipal code requires that any entity or parties seeking to run a commercial cannabis business within the city must enter into a development agreement with the city, which is a contract that entails the rights and responsibilities of respective parties, timing of payments, obligations that they have to maintain from a, from a fiscal standpoint, operational standpoint, and things of that nature. So one of the questions for discussion is, does the council see the value in moving forward with the program with development agreements or potentially phasing them out and what the replacement, what a replacement scenario could look like? And the third question is, looking at the wholesale program, does the city desire to implement a cap or a limitation in the number of cannabis business, businesses that are permitted in the city? Right now, there isn't one and the, the idea was initially that the city would let the market drive that desire. So depending on the interested parties, there wouldn't be an artificial cap. But that's just something for discussion if, if the council wants to entertain that type of limitation. So let's go through a little bit of the background on the cannabis program. The cannabis program really initiated back in 2018. After several years at the state level, the state regulating or beginning the process of regulating commercial cannabis use for both medicinal, it started off as medicinal and then branching off into both medicinal and adult use, which through a series of legislative acts at the state level and propositions, the voters of California determined that they want, that they wanted the state to allow this type of use to occur. And at the local level jurisdictions around the state, both county and city, then had to grapple with making decision for each of its own, to the respective jurisdictions on whether to allow it. And the city of Series back in 2018, actually in 2017, began the process of regulating medicinal and adult use cannabis. I will say that Series really was very forward-thinking at the time in allowing those, those uses and in particular the council that was in place at the time. And the general idea behind it was to allow for commercial cannabis by implementing some type of licensing permitting structure that would allow for both of those uses to exist. The pilot program was formally adopted in 2018 through an ordinance that requires that any applicant seeking to operate such a use. So to give you an example, what are those uses? Manufacturing, cultivation, dispensaries, storefronts that, that are more commonly known as the storefronts would have to go through application, investigation background, and approval of the city staff with a recommendation to the council. The ordinance requires that any operator that seeks to operate in the city has to comply with all state and local licensing permits and requirements. It did require a development agreement approved by the city council. Only business permits can only be issued by the city and it required a conditional use permit issued by the planning commission. I do believe there were some slight changes. So I, we have, we have three current operators, two of them operate with the DA and the CUP and I believe one, it may, I would have to double check, but there were changes made at the initial stages of the creation of the program. As I mentioned before, the monetary component for cannabis projects fell within the public benefit structure. The idea behind that was that by contract, operators agreed to pay a monthly public benefit to the city based off of their gross receipts, meaning essentially how much money they're, they're bringing in, not accounting for taxes, overhead and expenses that they could write off. So for example, we have here, there was a base payment requirement of $20,000 and then it tiered depending on how much a cannabis operator was making. They were bringing in more money, then they would have to pay a higher amount to the city. The idea behind the public benefit structure at the time was, as I mentioned before, and this is, this is the important component. This is all very unregulated and every jurisdiction within the state of California was entering and going into uncharted territory on how to regulate cannabis. This was the framework that the council felt comfortable with in, one, eliciting and soliciting interest from serious operators who would be vetted and approved by the council and that at the time the council felt could move forward with making this commitment and payment to the city. So not just to let anybody or anyone come in and operate, that there would be very specific monetary components associated with it. So that forms the, the background for the public benefit structure. As we have seen over time, the public benefit structure has become more challenging. And I know that there are operators, both who operate locally and regionally, that can share their experiences with the council about the many layers of, of government oversight and regulation that have now reached, it's reached a point that the, the market really is being affected by the taxes that are being set at the state level and at the local level. So this public benefit structure, while well-intended initially, has created some challenges from a, a operational standard for, for these operators. There's, and in, in case in point, because of these issues that the operators are facing, only approximately 60% of the amount owed to the city under the development agreements have been paid by the businesses up until 2024. It's created several challenges for these operators to continue their monetary obligation to the city. And we do have, in, in going through the records and accounting, there is a significant amount that's owed to the city pursuant to the contract. So looking at over a million dollars in public benefit payments that are owed that remain uncollected. Part of the challenge in evaluating this program is that, just like most things, there's always an administrative component to carrying out a program. The program was put in place with the hopes that it would be self-sufficient and would run efficiently. One of the challenges that staff has had is that there has not been, I think, maybe the, the, the most established or effective process by which to make those collection efforts to obtain compliance by the operators, which has led, which is in part has led to this amount of debt have accumulated over time. At a statewide level, the cannabis industry really has shrunk. And as I mentioned before, in part, this is due to, largely due to the regulatory and taxation environment that these operators face. There's even state proposed state action, legislative action that would prevent an increase in the state excise tax because that by statute has been established to increase over time. And it's really designed as an attempt to help ease the burden, the financial burden on the struggling cannabis industry. Unfortunately, one of the side effects of these types of, or this type of impact is that it is driving the market back towards the black market to what it was before. So it completely upends the whole purpose of regulation. If you make it so difficult for these operations to thrive and continue, that it's just driving the entire industry back into the unregul, unregulated black market. And again, the case in point, overtaxation of the cannabis potentially contributing to a growing illicit market for untaxed products. Untaxed products that are not regulated. Everything that is in the chain right now is regulated and have to meet certain safety protocols. But once things are in the black market, that it's a, it's a free-for-all and you don't really know what you're, what you're getting. So some of the issues that we've identified with the public benefit payments over time is that there is the difficulty in collecting the delinquent public benefit amounts. The fixed and outsized financial burden creates challenges with the cannabis business industry. And as you can see, we included this graphic to show basically every, you know, cent on the dollar, how much is, how much is the state excise tax? So part, and part of the discussion for the council tonight is whether there's, there's benefit in exploring further, moving away from this public benefit structure, again, where it's tiered to more of a flat tax, which is the wave of most jurisdictions these days are the ones that started with development agreements or some type of tiered payment. A lot of the jurisdictions are transitioning to some type of tax structure. And it could be tax structure based, oh, just a flat tax on gross receipts across all the different categories of commercial cannabis, such as distribution, cultivation, manufacturing and storefronts, or maybe tiered depending on the use. So maybe it's a higher tax for the storefronts, a smaller tax for manufacturing and distribution, and maybe a different type of structure charging a, a specific amount per square footage for cultivation because that seems to be one of, one of the ways that local jurisdictions have shifted. So there are several ways that we can consider restructuring this and getting away from the, you have to pay X number of dollars per month if you're within this category of gross receipts. Again, all things up for discussion. So now let's go through the questions that I'd identified before for council deliberation and discussion is whether the city should transition from the public benefit structure to a tax? And if so, at what tax rates? The, the tax structure is very specific in that the law requires if a city is going to impose a tax, it has to be voter-approved. So back in 2018, the city council approved measure W to be placed on the ballot to be voted on by the voters on whether to authorize the city council to impose a tax up to 15% of gross receipts on cannabis businesses and dispensaries, the storefronts. The idea behind that was to give the voter, obviously the voters have a say on whether a tax will be imposed and then give the city council discretion on what that tax rate could look like depending on the circumstances, the environment at the time, the uses. And so at this point in 2018, this, there were many jurisdictions within Stanislaus County that had similar ballot measures on, for, for their respective cities. And the voters did vote to approve this measure. The next step requires for the council to actually establish the tax rate. And that's where we're at in the process, is that the council has not established a tax rate yet. And right now, what we're seeing countywide, the cannabis business taxes are, there is a range and different ways to approach it, but it, it's as low as four and goes up to eight, generally speaking, for, for cannabis uses. What does an implement, the implementation of cannabis business license tax looks like? It's calculated based off of a percentage of gross receipts. So that metric doesn't change depending on how well the business does. They would be charged a, a flat rate based off of, at their rate, based off of how much is collected. The tax would be collected at, through the same mechanism as other business license taxes. So it would require the establishment of a, a process whereby the city requests this information from the operators. They have to fill out this information basically under penalty of perjury that they're, that they are confirming how much money they've made and then calculate how much they owe to the city. And under this arrangement, if we move towards a tax, then we would eliminate the public benefit structure. So it would no longer be 20, 40 or $60,000 a month, depending on gross receipts. That goes completely away and it would all be predicated on how well the business does in, in any given month. So what are some of the advantages of a business license tax? The tax could streamline the enforcement and administration of the city's revenue collection. So this is something that we're working on with staff to figure out the best process to move forward to it. Because again, the idea is we want to not only establish a rate that works for the operators, but we need to establish a mechanism that makes it easier for staff to collect these funds. And one of the, the goals is to reduce the financial burden on the cannabis business, obviously, by making the tax more in line with industry standards and what we're seeing in other jurisdictions. Because part of the problem is there's not much of a point of having a program to let these operations, to have these operators survive in if it's essentially not letting them thrive. They're unable to make ends meet or continue their, their, keep their doors open if it, there's an overtaxation component. Disadvantages of a potential tax is that it does create some revenue forecasting challenges as the city would no longer be able to rely on those fixed minimum monthly amounts. Before, if an operator was actually paying what they, what they should have been paying, then it would have, it was theoretically easier for the city to budget based off of those forecasts. It is uncertain how this actually will change city revenues. And as a follow-up to this presentation, when we bring anything back to council, our plan is to provide hopefully as much of a forecast as we can as to what we can expect in, in changes based off of your establishing some type of tax rate. Tax revenue would be required to be used by the general fund. The difference is the public benefit payments allow the city to apportion funds for specific purposes. The city council has not historically allowed that. There, there was a move and there was some very vocal individuals on the council previously that wanted to slate some of these funds for specific purposes. But overall, the council, the councils over time determined that they wanted it to just be a general fund allocation. So regulations unaffected by the transition to this business license tax. Everything would remain the same in terms of the requirements and the regula, the regulatory requirements. The city is still within its full power to condition cannabis business operations, establish and maintain the zoning requirements for where these businesses will, will look, or will, where they can be located. So establishing a tax doesn't, wouldn't necessarily change any of that unless the council wants to make those changes to the program. What do business license taxes look like in other jurisdictions? Within the county, I mentioned this before, there is a trend to get away from the public benefit structure and instead implement a tax based off of gross receipts. So we looked at a few other ones, the county itself, the city, Cities of Modesto, Riverbank and Patterson have either instituted a tax or in the process of moving forward with instituting a tax. We provide some basic information in the presentation. I won't go over every detail, but there's, there's a structure and a summary of what different jurisdictions have done. Again, the idea is that taxes, measures for taxes are put on the ballot for voter approval. And then the local legislative body has the ability to set that based off of that voter approval. And what we have seen consistently, again, is this range from four, as low as four, as high as eight, depending on the type of cannabis business that it is. So there's, there's hybrid approaches, there's flat rates, there's, there's, there's many different iterations that the council could direct staff to explore. Our second question. Should the city eliminate the development agreements for cannabis businesses? There isn't anything in state law that requires development agreements as part of the approval and operation of cannabis businesses in the state. This was something that was designed for the city. The city council wanted to approve a development agreement structure. And so it basically requires a contract. It's a contract between the operators and the city to move forward. Part of the challenge, as I mentioned before, is that development agreements do have a little bit of a higher administrative burden on city staff because it requires periodic review, you need to make sure, it's basically maintaining a contract. And again, it's not a one size fits all. Different jurisdictions have different levels of staffing available to focus just on these things. So if there isn't an efficient mechanism in place over time, it can create some gaps in enforcement, as we have seen with the current structure. The city does impose conditions on cannabis businesses on a case by case basis through the DA and conditional use permit structure. So there's a development agreement that's required. There's a conditional land use component to it to ensure that the use is compatible with the neighborhood. Obviously, the biggest example we can give you is under the code, it would not be permissible to ever have a cannabis use within a residential area. They're generally limited to light industrial, industrial, potentially commercial areas. So those are all things that can still be left within the current code or changes that the council may want to make adjustments to. The conditional use permit structure is something that the city can always maintain, even if it's no longer using a development agreement. The CUP can be the exclusive land use component. So what that would entail is imposing conditional use, conditions of approval for a project. It would go through the noticing process before the planning commission. It would establish a procedure to ensure that there aren't any negative impacts that are within the purview of the planning commission. And that's one aspect of it, that because the city already, from a staffing perspective, maintains conditional use permits, keeping this requirement in place doesn't add another requirement that staff has to maintain. So we've provided a little bit of a pro and cons list for both arrangements. Again, I would say for the council to look at this, that there's no real right answer. It's just what's going to work best for the city and work for staff in order to make sure that the program can be run effectively and efficiently. And so the final question that we have for the council tonight is should the city, it's part of any potential changes to the program, potentially create limitations on how the number of cannabis businesses operating in the city? So as a reminder, the city doesn't currently have those in place. The idea the council had was we'll take them as they come. We'll vet each project and operator on a case by case basis. But the city does have the ability to limit the number of these businesses through changes to the municipal code. And there are many jurisdictions around the state of California that have implemented limitations on the number of operators. So for example, maybe limiting the number of retail storefronts with a competitive application process, maybe not limiting it for manufacturing, limiting it for cultivation. So again, these are all things up for the council's consideration on any changes you want to make to the process. So in conclusion, we've, this is an item that has been identified as a priority by our council over the last few years to fully evaluate where we're at with the program. There are, again, I think some highlights and there are some items of concern that while overall, I would say that the operators have been operating within the generally operating within the confines of their required permits and haven't created a overtly negative aspect to the city. But from a financial revenue standpoint, it has created several challenges administratively. The, I don't believe that the expectations have been met in terms of how money was going to come in, probably both for the operators and for the city. Because the operators are the ones responsible for paying the public benefit, probably have seen that the business that they were expecting probably just hasn't come to fruition, again, based on all the factors that we talked about previously. So we thought that this was a good time for this council, this new council now being, I think, the third council since the first one, since the program's been in place, to take a wholesale look at the project, at the program and provide staff with any direction on any changes that you would like to see. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and I can answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much. We'll now open public comment. Anybody in the audience who'd like to make a comment on this item? Sorry about that, I did have a card for you, you'll be up next. Yes. No, you're fine. No, no, no.
Sorry for my coming up earlier. I didn't know the protocol of how this all works. Good evening. My name is Andy Hartog. I'm the chief operations officer for Case Manufacturing, which is a cannabis manufacturing facility located here in Series. First off, I'd like to thank the mayor and the members of the city council for taking this item up for discussion today. Case Manufacturing has operated in Series since 2018 and we would like to continue operating and generating tax revenues per Series. Originally, we were founded by Mike Reynolds, who has, whose son Case has a seizure disorder, which caused up to 1,000 seizures per day. Looking for a cure, Mike turned to cannabis derived CBD in an attempt to improve Case's treatment. Today's Case Manufacturing remains focused on providing clean alternative treatments to consumers across the state. We believe that the cannabis tax structure in Series should be reconsidered and aligned with other jurisdictions. When cannabis was first legalized in California, there was a false belief that the industry would be continuously growing sources of revenue, which led to many jurisdictions to implement fee structures with extremely high monthly payments, like here in the city of Series. Across the state, we have seen that the legal cannabis industry has not been the growth market everyone expected due to the persistent black market and the high level of taxes and fees in the legal cannabis industry. Since cannabis was legalized, Series has charged operators a set monthly fee that are not based on gross revenue. During Case Manufacturing's first year in business in 2018, Case paid the city of Series a set monthly fee that amounted to the 30.37% of total gross revenue that year. The next year, we paid the city 26.36% of total gross revenue. Since we opened in 2018, we have paid the city of Series 12% of our gross revenue, over $1.6 million. Extremely high percentage paid to the city is financially unstable and has made us go into the rears. We simply cannot afford it. Manufacturing facilities in uncorporated St. Louis County and the city of Modesto are required to pay 4% of their gross revenue. For the industry to be successful moving forward, we encourage the city of Series to align with the other jurisdictions, tax manufacturing facilities at 4% of gross revenue or less. Case Manufacturing has established a business model here that we are convinced can be successful and allow both our business and our community to thrive. We want to keep operations here. Most of our employees live in Series or are very close. We know we can become good partners with Series and be an asset that will make the city and Case proud. I thank you again for taking the time to discuss this item tonight. Case Manufacturing would be happy to answer any questions you have as you consider this issue. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Next person, please.
Thank you, Shirley Series. For 11 years since I had cancer, I took CBD. And I warned you when this whole thing first came up a few years ago and I was coming to your meetings and I told the city council at that time, you're going to tax them out of business. Well, right now, you're in a position where you're not collecting all the taxes. You've made a mess. Now you have a chance to clean it up. This is a business that should be treated no different than a bar, a tavern, or a place that sells alcohol. They're not necessarily everybody getting loaded. This is, you had a cash cow and you milked it dry. Now fix it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
No hands raised on Zoom and no emails received.
Okay, sounds good. We'll bring you back to the council for any comments and or questions on the three questions that our city attorney had. Because you need direction, right?
Yes. So again, the idea is to give us feedback on those different categories for staff to further evaluate and then package and present something to you for formal action. So I'm not looking for a formal motion, it's just more feedback and.
I'll start by saying on number one, I would support yes on the taxes. Number two, yes. And then number three, at least bring back a concept of what would it look like if we were to have a cap? Because I feel it's very important to allow the local businesses that are already here and established have a first dibs before we start expanding, because we are a small city. We're not the city of Modesto. I don't foresee there being, you know, more than the dispensaries that we have now. But just something like that to take in consideration. And what would it look like? Then obviously, you had a couple of examples on what the taxation would look like. Maybe break down those options for the council. That's all. Council member Vera?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know, similar to Modesto, I guess, some of us regarding the public benefit to the cannabis tax license. I do think that we do need to look at that, what's going to be realistic and what's going to work. When it comes to phasing out the development agreements and the number, the cap, I don't know if we necessarily even have the room to expand beyond what we have already, especially with the zoning laws that we have here in the city. But I also like the way that Modesto has a review process to make sure they're compliant before they're renewed. They're up on their taxes, their public benefit, and they're not causing any public safety issues. And I think from what I'm hearing, it's more of the smoke shops that are causing issues, which, you know, my police department's here and probably could not at me, but they didn't know I was going to ask that question. But I think that's also key on whether they're having issues or not. I know we had one where there was that robbery that came from Riverbank Indy Series and they were amazing and caught them. But again, I don't know how often that's happening until it actually goes online and everyone's talking about it online. Or I happen to have the scanner on and I happen to show up. But with that, I think it's coming down to my police response. Do we have enough to cover what is costing the city when it comes to responding to one, the manufacturing, if they're not causing issues and we're not having a significant issue, then we don't necessarily need to tax them any more than what it's going to be to cover the actual costs to that situation. But yes, again, I like the way like Modesto does where they have that review process, making sure they're compliant, they're compliant with the state, they're compliant with the city. A lot of times they bring in their employees and I appreciate all of you taking your time out of your evening to come out and support your employer. I think that means a lot when you guys are coming out and supporting. And I hope you guys will continue to stay in compliance so that we continue to stay in business here in Series, because I appreciate good businesses and good business agreements that we have in town. And I think that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Casey had his button pressed first. Okay, ladies first.
All right, well, bear with me for a moment. This is a lot of information to take in and discuss on one night. I almost feel like, I think we got the agenda on Wednesday. So trying to review this and then possibly doing some research and gain information on the history here of what happened in 2018 with the previous council. It's like with anything else, the state creates new laws and doesn't provide much guidance to cities or to new businesses. And then years later, we're in a situation like we're in right now in Series. When it comes to the public benefit or the cannabis tax, I just want to make sure it's fair for all businesses. I do believe that, you know, the cannabis businesses, I'm sure they are struggling because of everything that's on the black market. But also our police department struggles as well when they don't have enough public safety to go out and force the illegal marijuana grows. I would like to do some more research as to the development agreement versus the permitting framework. When it comes to implementing a cap on the number of cannabis businesses operating in our city, I believe 100% we have to do that because right now we're having this discussion due to the challenges that come with the administrative work. You know, the challenges that come to, for the enforcement when it comes to the police department. So I do believe in having a cap for this topic. But I do think that we need to look a little bit more into how other cities are doing it our size, but also be fair to the business and also taking in what our residents want.
Thank you. Mr. Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm all for this, the medical liquid stuff. I have friends that use it and it's very beneficial. Marijuana or dope or whatever you want to call it. There's no way that a city should allow it to be sold. It's uncontrollable. It has such a lasting effect on people. And yeah, maybe the majority go through life without affecting them. I've worked for a small company and all people. Governor Brown made it even harder because you can't drug test anybody until you actually offer them a job. So how would you like to have your best friend's son come to work for you? And you've offered him a job, everybody's excited. And he fails the drug test. And of course, it's a confidential, personal thing, you can't share that. You just turn out to be the bad guy because the kid's not going to tell him. It was bad enough when medical marijuana was available. Again, the liquid that people use like Miss Rogers and some other friends I have, I have no problem with that. Straightaway marijuana is not, it's just not a good thing. You know, I'm older than most of you and I was in the war, not the Korean War, Vietnam War. And I had the opportunity to go into a bunker once or twice. And I guess I was afraid that my mother would find out, so I never tasted it. But those guys that I knew and followed their lives later, they came out of the army and they had all these other issues and some of them never recovered. In public school, when I was in school, Stanislaus State was growing and my English teacher, my senior year, her husband came from Johns Hopkins or someplace and she promoted, someday it's going to be legal, it's good for you, it's good for you. Well, four of my friends took a word for it. They all were arrested for selling marijuana. One of them ended up dying of a drug overdose. Now whether it was because he started using marijuana at 18, I don't know. But think seriously about following the money and the benefit that, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Okay, so it sounds like there is some direction. Are we okay with that direction?
Yes.
I agree with every, with these two right here as far as the direction.
So based off of what the council has said, what we'll do is bring back potential tax bracket structures for comparison, bring back additional information more specifically about what other jurisdictions are doing and a general maybe outline of a framework on what a transition from a development agreement framework to just maybe a CUP framework could look like. And also then include some potential language about capping business type. It's basically present options to the council. So my goal will be to bring back a menu of options for the council to pick and choose. And based off of that, then bring back an ordinance if that works. And if there's anything specifically offline that you'd like addressed or researched that we can include for the next presentation, let me know and I can make sure that we include that.
Can I ask a quick question? Because it was in your presentation.
Because it was in your presentation that the funds typically in the past have been used for either to the general fund and we couldn't put it towards a certain cost, right?
Yes.
With this, are we able to reevaluate that and say that costs can go towards public safety and recreation?
The challenge is that it's easier to do that with the public benefit because you can basically make it and mold it however you want. What was passed by the voters was a general tax and not a special tax. So it's supposed to be for general purposes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So you have your direction. We'll now move on to council member referrals. Item number 12. This is City Treasurer Monthly Reports by Mr. Mr. Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Don't worry, it's getting late. I get it. You're you're good. Just go ahead. Go ahead. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the city treasurer job was voted on, I don't know how many years ago, to keep it as an elected official with the thought that people would pay an interest in the city finances. Reviewing the, you know, we had an issue several council meetings ago about passing an investment item. And the question was, had the city treasurer reviewed it? And it was found out that the city treasurer did not review it, so we didn't pass it. Doing more research, the city treasurer's job, it's a part-time job, granted. But the city treasurer's primary function is to work directly with the finance director. Okay, is that better? Okay. The the primary job of the city treasurer is to, she's a lucky elected official, she can bypass the city manager. She can work directly with the finance director and say, how's the reconciliation? She has two jobs. One to recommend the investment and the other job is to make sure the bank is reconciled. So I'm suggesting that the city treasurer make a report and I understand that, you know, she's come from a large family, good for her. And it, you know, it would be okay probably for her to make that report soon. She doesn't necessarily have to physically show up. But she needs, the city elected a treasurer, we voted to keep a treasurer. And the treasurer should do the minimum job that they have and make a report to us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Casey, we'll go ahead and open this up to the public and the members of the public would like to make a comment on this item. Anybody on Zoom that would like to make a comment on this item? So we'll take it back to council. Okay. And now we bring this item back to the council for any discussion, comments or questions.
So.
Good council member.
Sorry. Yeah, I think having treasurer reports is something that our city needs right now, especially for transparency. I do believe in having the treasurer work closely with the finance director would be important, especially since the residents did elect a treasurer again. I'd like to see see this occur.
Thank you. Council member Rosalinda.
Thank you both Casey for bringing this forward and Otero. I do agree, since they are elected, my understanding as someone who voted in the election is I thought they were already doing this. So I thought they were bringing a public view to the accounting process. And so I do like the idea of having a report of what's going on, even if it is kind of like what engineering right now does, or I mean, Sam does right now. We get a monthly report of just kind of an outline of what he's doing at all the parks and in the city and everything else that's going on with Public Works, which I really appreciate. And I kind of miss the one we used to get from engineering because we used to get the same kind of report. And I I look forward to reading those reports and kind of getting a better understanding of what all of you are doing each month. And I I do like the idea of seeing that come from almost every department. I think knowledge for the community so that way they know what you guys are doing as well because ultimately that's who we're all responsible for. And I try to do a monthly report myself. As you know, at every council meeting, I always do a report out of what I'm doing because I think it's important that we're all responsible to the taxpayers that actually voted us in and and take, we need to make sure we're being physically responsible with our money.
Thank you, thank you. I have a question for the city attorney. What does the municipal code say regarding to her position?
The city treasurer, the the what I would describe as the general fiscal responsibilities for the city in the municipal code are outlined as the responsibilities that are incumbent on the finance staff, finance director, and then an elected city treasurer. Over time, the city's municipal code has transitioned more towards making the treasurer position more ministerial and less active. And the majority of the responsibilities are within the finance department. There are a few things that are outlined in the code that are still within the purview of the treasurer, certain things that are required by state law. But generally speaking, the bulk of those responsibilities, including financial reports, falls within finance. So to that question, I'll take it one step further. The action tonight by the council is a referral item is to whether to agendize this for action at a next meeting. My recommendation would be in in hearing what I, the direction the council would like to go. If you do desire to make it more of a mandatory treasurer report, we'd have to make changes to the municipal code to be consistent with the action that you'd like. Because right now, the municipal code, the way it reads, those responsibilities are generally subsumed under finance. And there is the ability for your finance director to provide those specific reports as as you would like. So if the direction is to move in that direction, then we'll bring that as an item at a future.
That's why I asked that question because I know Kayla, she's on the line and she's an elected official. And I understand that there might have been some thoughts of what her responsibilities were when people voted for her. But that's exactly what I was doing my research on, that those what is set in that municipal code is what her duties really are. And I've actually worked with the finance director and her in the background. We've signed documents when needed. So there is work. I know the the council doesn't really see it, but she has done her job when she's needed to do her job. So I wanted to thank her for that. Obviously, it's the will of the council, but I just wanted to ask those questions. Thank you. And I saw Serena, you press your button.
Just really quick. You know, I do appreciate the work that Kayla has done in the background with you. And I think that might be where there's some confusion or maybe some clarification needed because I personally have not seen anything publicly come from our treasurer. So I think it would be helpful if we did see, you know, some, like I said, like Mr. Casey recommended, the reports or comments from the treasurer when there's an item that comes up that has to do with finances.
Rosalinda, I saw your button was pressed.
Thank you. And Serena, Serena, I do agree with you. I guess my next question would be then to the city attorney, what exactly? Just talking to the community the last couple of days and when I saw it on the agenda is some misunderstanding of what their actual responsibilities are and what they're doing. And it is possible, like Serena said, I appreciate it. She may be doing it in the background. We're just not aware of it up here and the voters are not aware. And I don't know about the members that are here today. But again, I haven't seen it and I appreciate that she's doing it without, you know, even being acknowledged for her work. But I think it's clear that obviously the public and even part of the council is unfamiliar with the duties that she was voted in to do and that she is fulfilling and what she should be or is, I'm assuming she is fulfilling at this time. And I think we just need some clarity.
Not it's not uncommon for there to be a little bit of juxtaposition of what the municipal code requires of an elected treasurer and what's happening in or what would the default be for an elected official? There is a trend in jurisdictions around California to transition away from elected city clerks and treasurers for that exact same reason that historically and maybe when the government code provisions were first voted on in the in the 1800s, there was a need to have an elected official do all those things. But as time has progressed, jurisdictions have staffs now to handle a lot of those day-to-day responsibilities. And so that's where you see that that shift of, do we want an elected official to handle these? Do we want professional staff or someone who is maybe, you know, has that level of experience or expertise that would be part of the city structure to provide that that those services? But do we still want it? Or do we want an appointed treasurer? Because that's that's another route that some jurisdictions go is that it's a position that's appointed by the the council and it could be an employee, it could be somebody else. So there's all different types of iterations. But what I think we can do at a future meeting is bring back and a staff report that lays out what the code says, what state law requires and how that fits in with the current structure. And then maybe some options for the council to pick, again, if you want to make changes. Because from my reading of the municipal code, like I said, the large set of responsibilities from a fiscal reporting standpoint are set for your your finance department. So if you want to have your elected treasurer take those responsibilities back, I guess, we'd have to make those changes to the code in order to be consistent and to ensure that we're allocating resources and staffing appropriately. Because part of the challenge is having an elected official, we have to, it's more of an administrative issue, making sure that we can coordinate and give them all the access that they need in order to provide the reports to council.
I'm okay with that.
And with that, this does address council member Casey's recommendation for reports, right? So I'm sorry, referral.
So the referral is council member Casey would like the city to, or city council to require that your treasurer provide periodic reports. My recommendation would then be if you want to make that a requirement, we need to make changes to the municipal code so that it's reflected that way, so that it's clear and and that everyone understands who is responsible for what. So what we'll bring back is, again, a menu of options of what the council would like to transfer those responsibilities to your elected treasurer.
Thank you.
Mr. Casey, I saw your button was pressed. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, city attorney. What brought this up for me is I was looking at our municipal code and it was, I I you know, I have, I'm not nearly as good at this as our mayor or my grandson. I was trying to find the email that I sent to the city manager. It it had a reference to a code and and it just said simply that this, her job, I mean, not her job, but the city treasurer's job was to report bank reconciliations and advice on the investment. It was just a two job, maybe it was an outdated municipal code. I'm not sure. But thank you, Paul, for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Does that satisfy your request, sir? Do you have a question, Feller?
Just consensus given.
Yes, what we discussed. I believe so. Rosalind, I know you didn't really nod, but I would assume.
So the 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 direction is to bring back a menu of options, more information about this so that we know what you'd like, what changes you'd like to make to the code.
And I would also request that we keep Michaela in the loop. I don't think that she got the memo. I think respectfully, she is an elected official. She should know about these things prior to the city council. She told me that she didn't. I was just wanting to make that a point. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, so consensus is four oh?
Yeah. Okay. Well, it looks like we're at the end of this. Unless there's reports, but there will be. So I have nothing to report, but I believe whoever looked at that, that was quick. Casey, you got it. Christmas here.
Mr. Warren from District One left out, May the 9th, 10th, and 11th, the VFW will be selling or giving away, asking for donations to poppies. The money for that goes back to the VFW headquarters and is dispersed to veterans, childrens that need help. It's the 9th, 10th, and 11th at the Walmart store here in series. And John will be there Friday morning to give you all the information. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Rosalinda, you're next.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. Just kind of a recap, I did go to the Chamber of Commerce, this Modesto over at the Modesto Nuts. It was an honor to be there. I actually ran into some elementary school friends that I've been friends with since I was like three, which I think we date it back to like 1977. So we've kind of known each other for a few years. And their dad was actually recognized for his time in the Marines as veteran of the game. So it was kind of an honor to be there. Love Series, it was a great event. Again, I know I was kind of limited on what I could do. I was actually really thankful for Serena. I was able to write 17 cards and make really cool pictures with one hand. So that was kind of exciting because I didn't think I had a whole lot of artwork inside me, but I found a new flower that I was able to make. So I appreciate the enthusiasm the students had and the kids and the youth that were there. And very engaging and just tremendous joy. And then it went out to the police department. I know there's some issues with weeds out there. And if I do have a weed whacker, if you guys still need one, I'm happy to go outside this building and take care of it myself because you usually do that. And then afterwards, I went to El Romo Tito where they actually handed out over 500 gifts out to children that were there for the Dia de Nino. And the thank you to the families for love, or part of their love the county event, or love your city event, just kind of thanking the residents and the ones that came out. They gave out actually rather nice kind of gifts and they had a clown. It was kind of fun. I also went to the Economic Evaluate at Opportunity Stanislaus this week during our luncheon. They went over grant funding through the county for bioengineering and compliance to our 2030 plan. They're using, looking for people that are interested or have ideas when it comes to actually using natural resources such as almond hulls and changing them into some kind of usable product. And they actually brought out like a flower pot that's being used by almond hulls that they were able to make. So I thought that was kind of a usable, kind of a cool idea. They have some other ideas that they're using and some other companies and they have some funding available for people that have those interests. They were kind of working with some of the colleges locally to try to make that happen. I'm also going out to a training here soon. And I'm actually going to be on a call regarding providing aid at times of crises. There are non-police emergency or situations where we don't always need armed police out, such as when we had COVID, when we have other issues such as unemployment. We had some issues over, you know, with Lazy Wheel when it came to getting resources out them and getting them out to the shelters or getting them out to the showers. That doesn't necessarily always need an armed police officer, but it's a matter of maybe code enforcement or the community coming out saying, hey, let me connect you. Did you know you can go take a shower at the corner over on Hatch Road? Did you know that they have the food bank at the corner? And a lot of times those resources we can do together as a community to help each other and help our neighbors. My neighbor is in a walker, so when I can, when I'm out mowing my lawn if her lawn's not mowed, I will mow her lawn just because I know that it needs to be done, right? So some of those things we can do together, especially in times of like fire, floods and illnesses and just having those resources available. I know our code enforcement and care are currently out now. They go out on Thursdays to help the community. Shirley Rogers, I know she left already, but she said that there's some pink pamphlets here that Joey has, I believe, as well regarding resources for our seniors. And again, it's about the community together, working to help each other. And I think that's key because not everything needs to be done by our police department, especially when it comes to resources that we have lunches here almost every day for our seniors during the week. And I think that's important. During the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance meeting, they had mentioned that the Housing Authority actually is having a funding cut. So and their emergency shelter funding is also actually completely gone. So there's going to be some changes that you're going to be seeing when it comes to actual emergency funding and emergency shelters as well as the actual Section Eight or housing assistance that they currently provide with their shortcoming. And then earlier you heard Jake regarding the agendas. I do encourage those to come out. I know lighting at the park has been a huge discussion. Again, in order to do that, that's going to take funding. So I want the community to come out and engage in this this discussion. I know they came out and keep talking about the lights in baseball or Field Three. That's a very, very important topic that we need to discuss. But again, we need to do this with the public. I need to know where they feel when it comes to funding and how we're going to make that happen. I completely support getting it done. It's just a matter of how we're going to make it happen. There's only so much money in the park. There's only so much money in the park and I know there's some ideas that the staff is working through and hopefully we can bring something to the council sometime soon and get that resolved for everyone that was here. I know they're not all here, but again, our kids are our youth and they're our future and I appreciate them coming out today as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, council member.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I just want to again thank the Committee for Love Series, especially Brandy and her husband Keith, who have led this committee this year. The sponsors and just all the volunteers that came out and did great work on Saturday, even though it was, you know, raining the night before and in the morning, people still showed up and I just really appreciate that. As the newest council member up here and hearing the concerns about the Lazy Wheel Mobile Home Park, I too have reached out to HCD. An email has not been answered yet, but I will continue to look into that as well. Specifically to all of the trash and just the dump of empty mobile homes that is collecting homeless, you know, and a bunch of other garbage, aside from the unsafe conditions that those individuals are living in. Also, Chief Johnson's heard from me twice in one week through an email and also our city manager when it comes to the homeless around La Perla Tapatia Plaza and then along the canal on Hatch at the end of the Whitmore, I'm sorry, Walmart parking lot. Chief Johnson, you've been really helpful in giving me information that I can then provide to the residents for all of the concerns. So thank you for that. And also, this is, you know, a topic statewide. And it's very, it's hard on the police department and the code enforcement to, you know, take action 24/7. So it's not easy for our city to deal with, but I do appreciate the efforts that the code enforcement has put in and I appreciate the efforts of our police officers. Because again, it's taken a lot of time from them to handle this and there are other things that we want them to take care of and enforce. So thank you, Chief Johnson, for working with me to address the issue. I do encourage the residents to use the City of Series app to report any public nuisance issues and also the homeless encampments. Please continue to report those. If there's an immediate concern, feel free to call Non-Emergency Dispatch. And the police department will be able to help you. Thank you.
Great reports today. City manager.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. City attorney.
Nothing to report tonight.
Any of our departments?
Yes, I just want to let the council know that we have three new businesses opening up in the next two weeks. So we have on Wednesday at 4:00 PM, A W Recovery Lab at 2531 East Whitmore behind Quest Diagnostic. We have the Drip Coffee Bar opening up. And they will be open tomorrow at 6:00 AM this week for a soft opening. And then their grand opening will be on Friday at 10:30. They're located at 2934 Fourth Street in downtown. And then on May 14th, we have a grand opening at the Gateway Center for Panda.
Can you repeat?
Panda. That's the only one that we didn't get in the email. Panda. That's a good one.
Haven't got Panda yet because we just, I got a
It was like
You'll get the notice.
An hour ago, right? That's great. That's good news anyways. So Rosa, did you have a question about that?
No, I just didn't catch the date because I usually type the minute.
14th.
Panda is for May 14th. I believe at 9:30.
So add that to that email request I did for you, Felon, for the certificates. And over there too. Well, anybody else?
Mayor Lopez, I just wanted to let you know and the council that the street fair will take place this weekend. That will start on Saturday, lands on Sunday, 5:00.
Awesome. Rosalinda might have had it. Are you sure? Okay, never mind. Never mind. Go ahead.
The Fire Department is currently running a strategic plan survey. You'll see that on our social media. We encourage it. Our policymakers, as well as our members of the public, to take that and contribute to the analysis and evaluation of what the fire service MST can do to improve the service to the public.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, you may.
DJ doesn't want to brag on his team over there.
He doesn't remember. That's okay.
Oh, I know. He does have a lot of stuff. But I just want to thank you because I know we get lots of concerns about these pop-up food vendors. And your team did amazing going out there and collaborating with the county food department and confiscating the food. I think that's huge. And I want to make sure that, you know, the public knows that that did take some collaboration. The county food doesn't just knowingly work at night without working, you know, having a reason to come out. And I appreciate the police department working together with the county to make sure that happens. And obviously, you're not seeing a lot of them out right now and I'm hoping that will continue to be the trend. But if they return, I am fully supportive of you guys continuing to crack down on our illegal vendors. So we can continue to support our legal vendors, which I think is important that we keep our tax dollars here local. But I want to thank you and your force because obviously it wasn't just you by yourself. And I see them, kind of a couple of them in the back that were part of this collaboration. And I just want to thank you guys for making sure this happens and keeping our vendors, our legal vendors available and our illegal vendors out of our town. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we will now go into another closed session. Do I need to read it out?
Mayor, just a point for the council's consideration. I think that we can dispense with this closed session this evening.
Do you want to dismiss it? As long as your council is okay with it.
Yeah, as long as the council is okay with it.
Yeah, it looks like everybody does want to go home today. Awesome. Well, with that being said, there will no longer be a closed session item. So that means that this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night and God bless.